One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, moving on, item two on the agenda. You got citizen concerns, any concerns? Come right up, state your name and address, right? For the record, and then...
My name is Joyce Van Hollen. I live at 4230 Hickory Lane. I've never done this before, so I'm a little nervous. My concern is, I would like to know what you're going to do about the corruption here at the Woodbury County Courthouse. There has been ex parte done here. As you all know, Judge Jacobson admitted to doing ex parte in Ida Grove. He admitted in 2001 in open court that he did ex parte in over 200 cases. Judge Neary documented it, October 26, 2009, and then he took it off Iowa courts. I am now personally suing not only Judge Jacobson, Judge Neary, and the Woodbury County Courthouse. Now, if this, it will be... It will be found out, because I have a rebuttal witness who copied it. And when this is discovered, I will personally, personally be at every case, because every minority that was here will sue this courthouse. What is the courthouse going to do? Because every case will have the opportunity to overturn this case. They will have the opportunity to overturn their cases. What, what is this board gonna do?
Ma'am, just want to explain to you, I'm the Woodbury County Auditor. I'm not, I'm not a supervisor. I just want to explain to you is that the Board of Supervisors has absolutely no jurisdiction in what you have brought forth this evening.
The judge doesn't serve at our behest or our behalf, he's not our employee.
That's what I'm being told by everybody? Because they have so much power, but nobody wants to do anything about the judges? Everybody's letting the judges have that much control? That's pathetic.
Well, they're not under our...
That's pathetic.
Well, they're appointed by...
It's, it's Constitution.
Right.
That's right. They're violating constitutional law. And you're letting minorities get walked on in your jurisdiction? No, you personally. You personally, Mr. Gill, are letting minorities get walked on.
I am, I'm just performing my job duties as the...
Because I'm telling you, judges...
The Iowa code prescribes my job duties, just as the Iowa code prescribes the job duties of the Board of Supervisors.
And I'm telling you, judges have done ex parte, and now they're hiding evidence.
And that might be true. There are provisions in Iowa law for you to pursue, but they are not with this Board of Supervisors.
And so you're going to continue to let them hide evidence?
There is nothing I can do or this board can do...
Yes, you can.
In the provision.
Because you can investigate it. I've already started.
We, we have absolutely no ability to do that.
Yes, you can. You can start a D I C investigation.
A legal counsel? What, what authority do we have over a judge?
Pat is correct, there's no authority from the Board of Supervisors over a state or federal judge.
It's not federal, it's a state.
No, state judges.
But you could start a D I C investigation.
What's a D I C investigation?
D C I, I'll bet you mean.
D, D C I, I meant.
I know what you meant.
Yes.
We, I'm sorry, but we have no ability to do that. And the county Board of Supervisors...
So you're gonna let minorities just get...
There, there are provisions in the Iowa law that you can pursue.
And I'm telling you, you can start a D I C investigation.
And I politely, respectfully disagreeing with you, because we have no authority to do so.
You can.
No, I can't, because I personally have it on my, on my phone telling me they will not take it from a civilian. They will take it from a government official.
Ma'am, I would advise you to take it up with legislators in, in this area. Find your state representative or your state senator, and ask them to...
Okay, why don't you, Mr. Potter, call D I C?
D C I?
Yes, you know what I meant.
Yeah, I know, and I know what you're talking about, but I don't know that D C I would do an investigation into the judges either. I think that has to come through the legislature.
They said if, if you or a police officer, you're a private, you're, you've been a police officer? Call him, ask him. I know I'm telling the truth.
Well, I, I know what our limitations are, and we as a board have no...
Have the police investigate it? Because the police tell me they can't investigate it, because the judges are under them.
Yeah, police have to do with a judge's orders.
So have... See, he's got a funny, funny look on his face.
I mean, the police can do any report, any investigation they want, but I'm not sure they would do it either, but...
They're telling me they can't, because the judges are over them. D I C can't do it, because they can't take it from a civilian.
And I, again, I don't have the answer, but...
So you're just going to let minorities get screwed in your jurisdiction?
But it's not our jurisdiction.
This is your jurisdiction. This is Woodbury County. I am in the courthouse that is, that is screwing minorities.
Well, but our jurisdiction is of the building in the county.
This is the building that did it.
The building didn't do it. Buildings, buildings don't commit crimes. We run the building. We don't run the people necessarily in the building. Does that make sense?
Okay, well, this building is a part of it.
Well, the building had committed no crime.
Okay, you know what? Then get the hard drive, because this building is part of the hard drive. Check the hard drive.
There are freedom of information requests you can make as a private citizen.
Okay, you are part of it, and I'm requesting the hard drive from the board. You just said you are the, in charge of this building.
The building only, but...
Ma'am, by Iowa law, the only provisions that the Board of Supervisors has to provide for the, how they react with the judiciary system is that we provide space for the judiciary to operate under the Code of Iowa. That is the only provisions that these folks have, is that they provide building space for the judiciary to operate.
So that's pathetic. You're gonna let every minority get screwed by these judges that do...
It's not, it's not our jurisdiction.
I have absolutely no power or duty to respond to your...
You said this is going on YouTube, right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
So I'm going to let every minority know what the Woodbury County judges are doing. And I'm gonna demand that October 26, 2009, be checked in Lewis versus Van Hollen. Everyone.
That is your...
Have that subpoenaed.
That is your prerogative.
Oh, if, if it's gonna be on YouTube, I demand that every attorney have that subpoenaed.
And it will be.
Oh, I, I hope to hell it is. Please, ma'am, make sure that's on YouTube. Oh, thank you, and I do apologize for the profanity I used.
Thank you.
And you guys have a good day, I might as well be leaving.
No problem, we'll move on. Item three, approval of the agenda, I will move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Moving on to the consent agenda, items four through seven constitute a consent agenda, routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item four, approval of the minutes of the October 8, 2019 meeting. Item five, approval of claims. Item six, County Auditor Pat Gill, receive auditor's quarterly report. Item seven, from Human Resources, presentation of award certificate to Nicholas Nieman. Item eight, oh, excuse me, that ends the consent agenda, I will move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes five to zero. Moving on to item eight, from our Weed Commissioner, receive and approve annual report by the County Weed Commissioner. I say, usually this is his moment of ultimate triumph here, to tout the achievements.
Well, if we're just gonna receive it, what do we need to stand in for?
I don't know, I haven't communicated to him that I had it on the agenda, but there is a November 1 reporting requirement that changed a couple of years ago. It used to be December 1, so he cranked out his report early this year. Thought I heard footsteps and was hoping he may...
He's not coming down the steps.
Yeah, that was, that was me cracking my knuckles, I'm sorry.
One of the big issues that we're gonna be working with Dennis on is getting his new sprayer. We did get some quotes for that this year. I'll be, I think that's in your capital budget?
C I P, whenever we ask him back to present to the board for official approval.
Yeah, we've got the quotations now on three different weed spray systems that we'll be presenting for consideration in the next couple of weeks. One of the things that Jared has been doing that has worked very well for his progress around the county is I let him set his own hours. So on days in the summer where we have favorable conditions, and if he's out at 5:00 in the morning, he can be spraying, work till noon, when the conditions become less favorable because of increasing winds and that, Jared's been very willing to do that, and he's gotten out and really made some progress on keeping some of the areas in the road ditches that we've clear cut, kept them clear of regrowth of brush. I know he made 19 contacts with people who were in need of a weed control notice, that they had to control thistles or some other noxious weed on private property. Four to public agencies, but 19 to private individuals. It's nice to have a Weed Commissioner who knows about everybody in the county, and he's able, been able to get very good success in taking care of weeds on private property.
And they had an Assistant Weed Commissioner, Dennis Butler, this year, too.
Did we?
Did we?
Well, Dennis keeps some money coming our way, which is, which is a good thing. He has tried a couple of new, a couple of new sprays this year. I'm trying to remember, I think it was that Vastland that is used on trees. It's also one of the products that's a little safer on watercourses, if I remember right. I can't answer too many of the questions of what he had on here, but we are, again, making progress with trees and brush within the right of way. And he has been doing a good job of dealing with weed destruction on private property as well.
For his suggestions, he put down a lot more hours during the spray season? Has he discussed that with you?
Yeah, we've discussed that. At this point in time, we just budget the basic 42 and 1/2 hours per week. That would be something with, during budgeting next year, that perhaps we'd come to a proposal with the board to maybe increase him to maybe 50 hours a week in the summer, to allow us to cover more ground.
Okay, he shortened it to maybe beginning, end of the year, and then increased it during the season?
Seventy-five percent of the year he's on the board's payroll. Twenty-five percent of the year he's online.
Oh.
Through the winter months, January through March, he works for the Secondary Road Department.
Okay.
In those other months, he's an employee of the County Board. So it, it's kinda hard to, to do some of that. I think we could perhaps put that as part of the proposal. We maybe look at balancing longer hours in that prime spray season from about, I think it really starts beginning of May. And we're, you know, at this time of the year, we aren't buying anymore. He's finishing up his stock for this year. We're shifting over to brush operations with our tractor, with the brush head and herbicide for dabbing in it, so...
You do have kind of a few positions, though, in your office out there that are busier summertime, and then others that are busier maybe wintertime.
My staff, you mean?
Yeah. Or under your...
The engineer's staff or the maintenance staff?
I think engineers, you might have some that are maybe busier and...
They are, they are busier, but we budget more for overtime for those staff members who are out on inspection during the summer. We build that into our budget.
Okay.
The budget for the Weed Commissioner has always been built on that 42 and 1/2 hour work week. So we, we're, we run him quite a bit tighter. We did make use of some compensatory time with him this year, again, to control wages in some of those periods where he had to be out longer. This year was really handy to have him around, especially during the flood. He was out there assisting us with flood response, barricading, and those type things, so...
I'll go ahead and...
We get good utilization out of him in the winter.
Receive and approve, gotta do one to receive and two to approve?
Have we done one motion?
Or can it be done on one motion?
Yes.
One motion? All right, I'll move to receive and approve the annual report.
Second.
The Weed Commissioner. Motion by Raddick, second by Young. Any additional questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes five to zero.
If you have some specific questions, I can arrange to get in here in the next couple of weeks. There you are, Mark. Oh, thank you.
Need to get like a chute, like just to...
Yeah.
All right, moving on to the County Engineers, Secondary Roads, 9A, receive quotes for one 19,500 pound G V W cab chassis truck for the Secondary Roads Department and return to the County Engineer for an award recommendation.
Well, this is gonna be a surprise whenever we open. Jensen sent us three bids, none of which are marked with what is in them, but I assume they sent a bid for each one of the pickups. The first one is from Cornhusker International Trucks. This one I am assured is for the 19,500 pound F550 size truck chassis. We did quite a bit of research looking at sign trucks. Prior to making a decision on what track, truck platform to go with, we looked at, the Harrison County truck was the last one we looked at. It's similar, although better built than our current second truck, which is also on a 550 chassis. The smaller truck chassis offers additional maneuverability. It can still carry the load of signs. We spent a lot of money on diesel fuel on that L7501. It's a 1993, I believe, standard transmission. It's not necessarily the best platform anymore, now that we've eliminated using wood signposts, we're using those steel telespar posts. We've gone to a more compact and efficient operation, and we're looking at the more compact and efficient to run truck to go with that. The bid from Cornhusker. I have bid tabs for you, if you can pick those up.
Thank you.
Total bid, $57,000. There's no trade on this. Our proposal is, once we have the new sign truck assembled, we'll go out to auction with the old one, using Big Iron, Purple Wave, one of the large equipment auctions houses that's available to us. $57,000. This is on a international C V 515 is the series and model number. And I'm going to open all three Jensen ones until I hit the right one. Maybe we'll get lucky on the first shot, but... How about that? Kinda lucky on the first shot.
You should probably open them all, just in case they bid an alternate, though.
I can do that and check it quick. Their bid is $47,808. Four seven eight oh eight.
He said eighty the first time, and then he said eight oh eight.
I'm sorry. Forty seven eight oh eight. Is the correct number. Ford F550 series truck. Our secondary road policy on truck purchasing is that we take bids from dealers within the county, as long as they have a footprint in the county. Jensen, as you know, has their Ford dealership elsewhere, but they do have their footprint in the county with the Subaru Volkswagen, whatever else is down there dealer. That would conclude the bids on the cab chassis, it appears.
Did you want to compare them, or are you good with the recommendation?
I would like to make comparisons, to make sure that they're fully in compliance with the specification.
So move to receive them?
And return to the County Engineer for...
Okay.
And if I could, there is a reason for that. There is a good deal of specialized equipment involved in this truck, because of power takeoff requirements to drive generators, to drive hydraulic units and such that are a part of this vehicle. It has to be, we have to be sure that it is prepared for that sign body, and there was a substantial amount of specialized equipment included. And I want to make sure it's in the bid.
Second.
I'll go, move by Taylor, seconded by DeWitt. I think Young got one already today, so I guess I'll... And any questions? Comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. 9B, receive quotes for one four-wheel drive tractor for the Secondary Roads Department, and return them to County Engineer for an award recommendation.
This will be another one that even if we have an obvious winner. Last year, the obvious winner had defects in their response to the specification that were resulted in them not receiving the bid, so... We bought another of these tractors, if you'll remember, I think it was fiscal year 2018. The first quote is from S and S Equipment of Laton. We are trading the current Case IH tractor. Purchase price, $91,500. Trade-in value of the current tractor, $25,000. Net purchase price, $66,500. This is for a McCormick X6470. Next one is from Western Iowa Equipment of Correctionville, Iowa. Bid price, $94,450. Trade-in value, $450, or $25,000 again, I'm sorry. $94,450 total price, $25,000 trade-in, net purchase price, $69,450. Also for a McCormick X6470 tractor. This is a little bigger tractor than we bid in 2018. This one weighs around our big 15-foot wide battling mower. Next bid is from Titan Machinery. Kingsley, Iowa is the location of their ag dealer. They also have the heavy equipment dealer down on Harbor Drive. Total bid price, $125,500. Trade-in, $20,500. Net purchase price, $105,000. This is for a Case IH Maxim 150. Final tractor bid is from AgroVision of Laton, Iowa. This used to be Icon, AgroVision took over in June, September. Total price, $112,000. Trade-in, $17,500. Net purchase price, $94,500. I recommend the board receive the bids and allow the Engineers' Office to review.
So move.
Second, motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Moving on to 9C, receive the pickup truck quotes and return them to County Engineer for an award recommendation.
Now, we have two quotes for pickups. One is for a 3/4 ton four-wheel drive extended cab. This will be replacing Foreman's truck at Frank. The other one is for a 3/4 ton regular cab pickup. That one will be replacing just one of the regular crew pickups.
Is there really that much difference between two and four-wheel drive to?
To buy two-wheel instead of four-wheel? About three, four thousand dollars.
Really worth it in the scheme of things?
What this truck gets used for is hauling around our crew with chainsaws and such during the winter, the guys who are doing the brush cutting. It'll get the fuel tank in it that's utilized by the excavator and dozer operator down there. The off-road capability isn't quite as important in this vehicle. Trying to make our dollars stretch.
Four-wheel drive has better trade-in value to at the end, so it's kind of a trade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it might be three thousand up front, but if it sells for five hundred thousand at the end, I mean, I don't know. But we'll, we'll just see what they come in at, and if you want to end up buying two four, four-wheel drives, I don't know that I'd.
I don't want two four-wheel drive extended cabs, because we're talking about a twelve, ten to twelve thousand dollar difference there.
Sure. Okay. That makes sense.
You know, in this case, we're just looking at the regular standard cab, two guys out for cutting brush, or again, the excavator operator going out to meet his piece of equipment each day. Typically, we park those excavators as we work out an area. The operator goes to and from each day. He's parking in farm drives and in places where he's less likely to get stuck. By the time we get rid of most of these vehicles, they're pretty well down the road. The current one is, you know, showing rust through the cab and fender corners, and we tend to run them until they get upwards of a hundred thousand miles and, and many hours of operation on them. The first one is for the four-wheel, the four-wheel, or I'm sorry, this is the two-wheel drive. This is Jensen again without the ones marked. Before I read this, I'm just trying to make sure I'm seeing what they're bidding. For the three-quarter ton four-wheel drive extended cab pickup, purchase price, twenty-nine thousand seven hundred seventy-three dollars. Two-nine-seven-seven-three. Trade-in on unit number fifty-five, fifteen hundred dollars. Net purchase price, including dock fee, is. Twenty-nine thousand six twenty-three is the, is the purchase price, one hundred and seventy-nine dollar dock fee, for a total of twenty-nine thousand eight oh two.
Is that after the trade then?
That's after trade, twenty-nine eight oh two. Now, for the two-wheel drive, they bid twenty-nine eight for the regular cab two-wheel drive. Seventeen fifty, seventeen hundred fifty dollars for the trade. Net purchase price, twenty-eight thousand fifty dollars, plus a hundred and seventy-nine dollar dock fee, twenty-eight thousand two twenty-nine. If they're low, what you're saying might make some sense, Keith.
That's what I'm saying. Most, most truck companies don't even make regular cabs anymore. They're all going to extended, so.
Well, and again, it wouldn't break our hearts to have an extended cab, because, you know, then we could send.
Extra guy on a crew or something, exactly.
But with the closeness of those two surprises me, and I, I really need to read through their specs to see where we're at.
I've actually seen some of the bids coming in where a short cab, long box has been more money than a short, extended cab, short box with four by fours, so.
But the two-wheel drive to four-wheel drive difference, and it could be the way the factory incentives are rolling right now. That's the other thing we don't know.
Because most municipalities aren't buying small cabs, two-wheel drive.
The next bid is from Keneffler Chevrolet. So for the three-quarter ton four-wheel drive extended cab, purchase price, thirty-one thousand nine ninety-eight. Trade-in on unit fifty-five, one thousand dollars. Net purchase price, thirty thousand nine ninety-eight.
Are these all on the same type of vehicle, or? What was Jensen's truck? Was it?
Jensen's was an F one fifty.
Okay.
Or I'm sorry, F two fifty. There's line sheets attached showing that they're F two fifties.
Does that mean they're diesel?
No, these are all gasoline.
Okay.
The only diesel was a nineteen thousand five hundred pound chassis.
Okay.
That is a diesel.
All right.
Gosh, on that four-wheel drive, the manufacturer suggested retail was thirty-six eight, eight, well, retail thirty-eight eight thirty, dealer inventory thirty-six eight eighty-eight. So you can see there's a pretty substantial incentive there. See what it is on the other one.
Because the other one's a Silverado, probably, right?
Well, the other one.
Government.
The other one is also an F five, or an F two fifty. But they also bid a four by four instead of a four by two. So we'll see here when I read off the Keneffler how that four by four on a straight cab compares.
Okay.
The, the four by four regular cab, thirty-six four ninety-five compared to thirty-eight eighty-eight. So it's only about a two thousand dollar difference on the cab. Thirty-four six seventy was dealer inventory number. Okay, for the two-wheel drive. In other words, Jensen offered us more truck than what we specified. And Keneffler, twenty-eight nine ninety for the two-wheel drive regular cab, two thousand dollar trade-in for unit forty-three, twenty-six nine ninety net purchase. And then he notes that for twenty-two hundred dollars, we can upgrade that to a four-wheel drive. Next two bids are from Barry Motors. First one I opened was the two-wheel drive, and keeping with the way I've been reading them to you, I'll open the other for the four-wheel drive. We need to amend the nineteen thousand five hundred pound chassis if we could. Barry also submitted a bid on that, but again, he didn't tell me down here. So added to that first nineteen thousand five hundred pound cab chassis bid, they're bidding an F five fifty for fifty-one thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars. Five-one-four-two-one. I'm just making sure there aren't two bids in this envelope. So for a F two fifty, two-wheel drive, regular cab, is, bid is twenty-eight thousand two forty-five. Trade-in on unit forty-three, one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Net purchase price, twenty-six thousand four ninety-five.
That was on the two-wheel drive regular cab?
Yes. It does not appear that Barry submitted a bid on the extended cab. There is no bid on the extended cab four-wheel drive. One of the things that we requested with that was passenger car style doors. That was in the specification. Chevy and Dodge both provide that style of door. Ford has the suicide door in the back on the cab. That could be why Barry didn't bid, choosing not to bid a crew cab, so.
I'll move to receive the quotes and send them back to the county engineer first.
Second.
Motion by Potamam, seconded by Taylor. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. I'll move to amend and receive the additional bid for.
We just included it.
Oh, it is included, okay. Just included. Thank you. Moving on, we have item ten, the reports on committee meetings. I did have a Simcoe meeting, board of directors meeting, where we approved another position for the Wicker Tiff board, which Matthew is on. They're, with all the grants they've gotten for rehabbing houses, they're going to need another position to help out. So that's a good problem, and of course, the grants help fund the position. Moving on, item eleven, citizen concerns. And my item twelve.
I would just like to thank the board of supervisors for the flowers at my brother's funeral. I appreciate it.
We owe Karen a big thank you for the direction to point us out for that.
I already gave her a thank you.
Rocky, did you have any?
I do not.
All right, so just announcement, urban renewal agreements coming up next week for the Tiff, for our gravel plan. We have financial advisor interviews tomorrow. Is there anyone that could be there for those, ten-thirty and one P M? So ten-thirty A M, one o'clock P M. I'll be at work for.
Down here in the boardroom?
Yeah, in the boardroom. D A Davidson's first and Hilltop second.
I'll be here, but I'll be working for the one o'clock, but I can be here for the ten-thirty.
Anybody else? Okay. Josh, any chance you could follow up with our concern about letting us know how a DCI investigation is started, so that if somebody comes up with that question again, we haven't answered, or?
I can let you know.
Sounds wonderful. And with that, I would like to.
Specifically how you can start.
I would like to defend, you know, anybody on this board and the auditor and everyone. We have outright concern for all of our citizens, and anything that is within our purview, I think we do our best to address those concerns. And with that, we adjourn.